Mike, so.
Okay, well, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. So Kevin, roll call.
We have four members present with Denny Nat present via Zoom and Diana Goldhammer, Megan Luther, Anne Temple. We're waiting. Susan Charks is on her way and Deb Iverson is excused. She has another meeting.
Alrighty, let's do the approval of the agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda as distributed?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Alright, the approval of the minutes.
Okay, let me.
And Kevin has the minutes distributed. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes as distributed?
And I have them on the screen displayed as well.
So moved. Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Alright, so we'll go on to the director's report.
Okay, I have written reports from myself and then Max Velazquez and Gene Patrick have reports. I guess first I'll ask if there are any questions. One thing I will add that I didn't include in my written report is the library will be closed for Thanksgiving. And again, this is the second year that the city has doing Administrative Day, which is the day after Thanksgiving. And so offices are closed that day as well. So we'll be closed the day after Thanksgiving. So people can take their administrative leave day. So any questions about any of the written reports?
I have a couple.
Yes.
Since you brought the holiday, it's Christmas Eve. Are your hours different?
And I haven't looked at.
I don't know if they're.
Let me look at the calendar. So Christmas is on a Thursday this year. So the city's holiday schedule is that employees get a half a day for Christmas Eve. So we will be open until noon. Employee, because we'll work eight to noon. And then the 25th, Christmas, we'll have off. And then we'll reopen on the 26th and 27th. And then we'll also be closed on the 30, on January 1st for New Year's. But we'll be open on the 31st. And we'll be open on the second that weekend.
And you're just taking questions for your report, right?
I'm sorry?
You're just taking questions for your report?
Well, any of, any of the, I guess, any of the written reports, then we'll go over kind of the statistics usage.
On the brewery gathering, do you know who our audience is or who we're trying to attract?
Well, adults. We don't want any, you know, I mean, if, if, if a minor would come, I mean, they could, they could drink and not look up.
Yeah.
But people who are, you know, just interested in reading and we thought having a different venue and a relaxed venue. But I mean, it hasn't been
Yeah.
Something, you know, we, there were a couple of people, you know, we talked to said, oh, you do, you combine beers with books, I'll be there. But then they haven't shown up, so.
I love the idea. I'm wondering if, and I don't know how this would work or if this is too much work for Max. But, you know, having a choice of five books and people choose who are interested. I don't, you know, I don't know if the book selection, if that's part of it or not, so.
That would, yeah, that would be, yeah, something. I mean, he's, he's talking about our, our normal book clubs too. You know, that we hold in the library. If, you know, I've talked to him about, you know, maybe having participants. This, his first year, you know, this past year, he kind of went through and selected books for each month and, but I encouraged him to, you know, consider also having input from the members to, you know, get, so that they're interested, you know. So you know, this, this trial thing, I mean, we don't even really know, you know, because there were some people who, who signed up and then they didn't come. You know, they, they borrowed a book and then they didn't, they didn't come either, so.
Sure. Do you know if it was advertised on, on the other side from Palace City Brewing?
I think that, you know, Jerry Beck did some advertising too, you know.
You know, they've got a fairly active Facebook.
Yeah. So, I mean, I, I don't follow their page, so I can't say for certain. I mean, that'll be something I think we need to focus on, I mean, for this last, at least this next attempt. You know, if, if we then end up deciding that only two people showing up is, you know, not worthwhile, then we better have. Diane, Diana will, I'm sure, agree that marketing's important, that we, you know, better have made sure we did a good marketing job. So that, you know, we can get as many people. So we can't say that's the issue.
Yeah. And I found when we do events, if we put it as like an actual event in Facebook, that they gets more traction. Because then people get alerted that there's an event versus just a general post. So, and I don't know if he did that or not, but the event.
I don't think.
Yeah, the event feature, I think, is helpful because then it's like a peer pressure. Like, three of your friends have signed up for interest in this event or committed.
Yeah. I'm almost thinking it would be fun to have like a, if you could game it somehow, like they do the burger battle or the dessert battle, if you could do a book battle. I don't know what that looks like.
Yeah.
But as a concept, I think it sounds like fun.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right? Like which place could host the biggest book club?
Yeah.
Or something.
Alright, cool. Well, I think it all too is on the selection of the book, like, not every book is gonna attract people and, you know. I'm probably too picky.
Well, you know, the first, the first time we tried it, I mean, I think the book was, he selected James.
Oh, yeah.
Which, I mean, that was an award winner.
Yeah, it's an amazing book.
Yeah, so.
And you didn't get that many?
No, only two people came.
Okay.
Sometimes I think if you're gonna do something in a, in a more casual setting, it has to be more pop than literature. Right? More pop culture, more, more buzz worthy than critic worthy. Does that make sense?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. No, I think you're right.
More of a Jodi Picoult than a literary giant. Not that I'm promoting anyone's books over anybody else, but you get the vibe, right? Like a Reese book or a.
A TikTok book versus a.
A book talk.
Pulitzer Prize winner.
Yep, mm-hmm, yep.
I just read The Christmas Pig, which I think every family should read together. It's so cute. It's J.K. Rowling. And just so, so pleasant and so, I mean, it's exciting and it's kind of a, like a, the Valentin Raff.
Sure. Okay, any other comments on the director's report?
Other questions?
Yes.
Question I had is the Comics Plus. You're, we're looking at doing that in addition to Libby?
Well, we're also, Overdrive, you know, Libby's the app for Overdrive. We also learned that Overdrive has a comics collection. So we're kind of looking at the two. At the time of writing this report, we had looked at Comics Plus, and it's a different platform, you know, which is an issue in and of itself, because, you know, people have to learn a different platform and go to a different place where, you know, if everything's all in one. With something that they're already used to using, that I think, you know, sets us ahead of, of people having to learn a new platform. But the, the Overdrive option is a few hundred dollars more. But we also want to look at, at, you know, what is offered. The Overdrive collection has more like comics and Marvel comics and that type of thing. But I don't know if it has as many graphic novels or manga as the Comic Plus. So we're just investigating those to see if, if. And we also sent out a, a query to other South Dakota libraries to see if any of them had it. Vermillion uses the Overdrive collection. Madison, a number of years ago, I mean, we had two responses. A number of years ago, Madison had Comics Plus, didn't get a lot of usage, they dropped it. And one of the questions I asked was, did it, did having this collection allow you to save shelf space? And they said, no, because a lot of our people who read graphic novels like to have it in their hand and, you know, see the images, see the graphics in their hand. And so, you know, their collection's actually probably grown, their physical collection. So that's something else that we, you know, are considering. So, I mean, we may not even do it.
Yeah.
But we're looking at it.
No, I think that's smart that you crowdsourced. And then you said a couple hundred dollars extra. Is that per month, per year?
Per year.
Okay.
So, I mean, it's not, you know, it's not that much. And, you know, I, we're also, you know, collecting how many, how many titles are available in each too. I mean, because, you know, if there are a thousand more titles or 500 more titles in the one that costs more, well, that's, you know, then that's worth the money too. Any other questions about the written reports? I mean, on the, you know, the strategic plan, I have the items, I mean, updated. You know, I'll, I'll just point out, you know, one thing that we're probably, we're, we have fallen behind is on reading the adult nonfiction. Just as I said, you know, we've, we've had a staff member who's been gone from work, which has caused, you know, Max to be more up at the, spend more time at the circulation desk and have less time to do readings. So that's fallen behind. But, you know, we're doing well on other areas. I mean, with offering more adult programming, offering more young adult programming. You know, we're already kind of hitting that just this year. This year compared to last year, we have had so far through the year, 20 more programs than all of last year. With, you know, 165 more particip, young adult participants. And for adult program, we've had 13 more programs with over 100 more participants. So.
What are some of the more, most successful programs that you've done for adults?
Well, you know, Max has, for young adults, you know, he started, oh, what's the, I can't think of the game right now. The game came out in the seventies, but it's a, a multiplayer game. But, you know, in the teens.
The Switch?
No, it's, it's.
It's okay, go on.
But, you know, so he's been having regular sessions for that. And so, you know, kind of getting the same people coming to that.
For the adults.
Well, the adults, it's been kind of sporadic. That's something that, you know, he and I talked about for next year, that we need to focus, you know, and do a little bit more on adults and, and we need to start working on, you know, getting, you know, with our other strategies of looking at getting, you know, some community groups to partner with. That's still something that I'm not quite, I'm not satisfied yet as to where we are with, with adult programming. There've been more.
I was just wondering what's your most successful ones?
Well, it's still prob, the most successful are probably still the ones that involve reading challenges.
Okay.
I mean, Bookopoly is still very popular and we'll be doing that again for the fifth year coming up. And, and the summer reading, you know, challenges as well. That's still, we have a community of reader, people who like to read. You know, I mean, our events don't draw as many as we would like, but people are reading.
Well, that's the goal.
And, well, that's, yeah. And I'll point that out. Any other questions? Or I'm gonna move on to statistics. And this is small. I'll try to make this bigger. I mean, the one thing that I want to point out is if you look at all the items circulated, I have right here, physical items. It's the kind of peach color and, and that center middle row. As of October 2025, we have circulated, checked out more materials, more items than we did all of 2024. So, you know, in 2024, for physical items, you know, print books, move, you know, audio books on CD, movies. You know, we had 102,370. And so far this year, we are through October, over 1,000 more. So, and we still have November and December to go. So, you know, we continue to see increased reading. Well, or at least in increased checkouts. You can never, you can never say what people have, have, you know, if they've actually read the book or not, but. So.
So why do you think that is? That we've had more?
Well, you know, we've, we've done more, we've done a better job at getting new books in our new book displays. Getting new books catalogued and available right away when they come out. So, and I think just, you know, I think people have become more aware of the library.
Cool.
So. So that is probably the, you know, the statistic that I wanted to, you know, just the usage statistic that I wanted to point out the most. And, and, I mean, there's the graph, the graph, that's all circulation, digital and physical. You know, and we're only 5,000 away total from all of last year after October. And, you know, we have continued to have over 14,000 per, 14,500 on average checkouts per month. So, you know, we'll be, well, you know, we could, if we have that, you know, yet, we could have well over 170,000 checkouts for the year. So. Which, I mean, if you go all the way back to 2016, I mean, we're already way higher than any, any checkouts previously. So. So that's pretty much, I guess, things that I wanted to highlight from the report.
Okay, do you have a motion to approve the report?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Financial report and approval of bills.
Okay, I have no bills again. Financial reports, I have the bank statements from September and October. So for September, we started the month, you know, after paying the board's portion of the new digital sign, we started with 87,700, rounding up 25 cents, $700. And we ended September with 88,164. And then for October, we started with that and ended up with about $90, $95 more after, you know, paying bills. So. And I will also point out, our, it's, it's interesting, the last two months, our revenues have slowed down a little bit. We haven't, it just seemed, we haven't had, haven't had as many used book sales the last two months. I don't know why, you know, after school started. I mean, we still are in September. You know, we had $890 in book sales. And in October, six, that dropped to $660. Both of those months were less than the year before, but you know, we still are increasing our bank state, our bank account a little bit. So. So maintaining, so we're still then maintaining the $75,000, easily maintaining that, that the board had established, you know, a number of years ago of kind of wanting to have that in reserves. So. And then for the year-to-date, on a board account, our total revenue, you know, is 27,000, this is through October, 27,607, which is $178 more than last year. And our total expenses are 17,695, which is 700, nearly $720 less than last year. So we have so far through October, just over $9,900 in income. Of, and, well, and I guess the one thing I should point out about this is, when I entered also the payment for the sign, that entered into equipment. So that becomes an asset. So that's not, I mean, you know, we spent the money, but, you know, it doesn't show up here as a operating expense. And then for the library, city budget, you know, we are pretty much on track. I mean, salaries are going to continue with two months left. Now, a month and a half, but this report is at the end of, end of October. You know, we would be at about eight, we should have about eight, less than 80% less left in each account. And for supplies, that's kind of a big one, we're at 81%. You all know postage, we already spent all of that, that I had the report as to what we spent and paid for with the, with the board budget in September and October. That was in the written report. Minitech fees, we've already paid those for the year. That's why we're pretty much, you know, spent all of that account. Our database, we've had those subscriptions already paid for. Periodicals. You know, we paid for the digital subscription to that collection from Overdrive. And then we canceled a number of titles. I don't, I didn't look as of today, but I know as of October, we hadn't paid the, the new invoice. We've received the invoice. I've submitted it. It's probably been paid by now, but that just isn't reflected in here. So our eBooks, we have ready to order some more for that. There's a sale coming up, end of the year sale. So we'll be taking advantage of some cheaper eBook prices, which is nice. And I don't really see anything else. The only other big thing that we've overspent is our utilities, our sewer, our water and sewer, that darn city. Our utilities wa- our sewer, our water and sewer, um, that darn city. You know, they raised those rates and, um, didn't, I didn't ask for enough for water and sewer, but we'll be okay, um. Overall, we're gonna be okay because, as you, I think, may know, um, we, employees got another. You know, insurance holiday, and so, uh, we will have money left over in our insurance account. So that if, you know, to help pay for the water and sewer, um, overage. And I don't expect that we will really have any other major overage, and we won't go over on any. You know, on our total budget. And I'm in communication with, with Stephanie, I want on that if, if there is an issue, I mean, I already talked to her about the water sewer account. So, that's, that's the. Financial report.
Second?
Second.
Favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, business items, A, action to approve funding requests for November.
Um, we have five funding requests, uh, two are similar, um, both Max and I. Would like to attend the public, the National Public Library Association Conference in Minneapolis next spring. Um, we submit, we, um, individually submitted, um, requests, and so, um. The early bird registration ends July sixth or ninth. January sixth or ninth, and so that's why we're submitting this now because in order to, um, you know, take advantage. Of the cheaper early bird registration, we would need to get approval of this now to, to go ahead and do it, um. And then hotel costs, um, in the twin cities downtown. It's in downtown, because the conferences at the convention center in downtown Minneapolis, um, are. You know, in the two hundred dollar or plus, um, cause that eight hundred eleven dollars would be for three nights. You know, with all of their fees and taxes, um, for me, um, um, I'm just asking for. reimbursing for travel one way and I'll cover it the rest of the way coming home, um. Because I feel I should put something into it, and I will cover my meals too, I mean, you know, I'm, I'm. I'm willing to, well. Well, but I, I, I.
Are there any meals included with the conference?
Um, no, breakfast, but the hotel that I pick, you know, would have breakfast, so.
So did you and Max not pick the same hotel?
No, he, his, he picked a hotel, um, I think that was a little closer to the convention center and it costs more. A little, his, his hotel, um, I, I'm gonna skip over the next one, and his hotel. Was nine seventy, um, and, you know, I picked one that was a little farther away. Because I was willing to, I mean, I've been downtown Minneapolis, I know.
Here's the thing.
Yes.
You don't need to pay for your own gas to go to this thing.
Well.
I don't feel good about that, but, I mean, I really, I really don't feel good about that, I feel like. There's money and we will pay, can I speak first? I'm speaking for myself, as I always have to clarify, I think that we need to pay your.
Well, okay, but I guess here's also, I mean, I, I can, I also feel, I mean, that's. Part of my investment into my continuing education too, so, I mean, that's, but. Thank you, I mean, if, if that's what you all decide, that would be fa- that would be great.
I mean, honestly, I'm sure there'd be another person who is a department head who'd say, I'll pay my expenses. No, nobody expects you to do that and you shouldn't have to pay for it, so.
Okay.
I would like to say that, to move that we pay the.
Well.
Transportation belt directions.
And, and I guess the, the, the big thing right now, I mean, we can talk about all of that later and decide, I mean, the big thing right now is. Just getting approval, I mean, that the board would be willing to pay for both of us to go. And approving so that we could do the early bird registration, the other thing is, if, if it's clear in Max's. Request, he, um, he has applied for a scholarship. From the Public Library Association that, um. Would pay for new people who've never been to the conference and have not been new, new to the, kind of new to the. Um, profession, um, and so it would pay for him to have a new membership to. The, um, association and it would pay his registration fee and a seven hundred fifty dollar. Travel stipend, so, um, you know, if he would get that, you know, then he would. You know, only need the three hundred seventy-one dollars, so.
The other question is, I know you said why, but I'm unclear why Max just wouldn't be at the same hotel as you. Especially with the cost difference.
Well, I.
He included parking with his.
I did too.
Okay.
I just didn't, um. Well, and we can, that's something, again, that we could, we can talk about, I guess, I wasn't. I think he picked one that he was comfortable with, you know, location to the, to the, um. You know, convention center, I was okay being farther away and taking a city bus or. Walking through the Skyway system, you know, a mi- if, I mean, the one I picked was about a mile away, but, um. If that's something that the board, um, yeah, I mean, mine obviously was, you know, the one that I picked was cheaper. Um, you know, we, we can certainly make that too, I mean, that's something that we can, you can say. Be at the same hotel and, um, you know, we can, we can again determine that later. That's fine.
So you're not riding together?
No, because he intends to then stay, this conference is Wednesday through Friday. He wanted to stay for the weekend then and, and spend the weekend in Minneapolis, so, yeah. And that, so that was actually another reason why, I mean, we both agreed, I mean, he has. Volkswagen Jetta that gets good gas mileage, you know, we both agreed that, you know, we could cover, be willing to cover. Um, you know, the trip home on our own, because since we're not riding together, then the board would only be paying for. The equivalent of a trip up there and back. So I guess. How, how, it sounds to me that you're kind of all in favor of us going.
Yes.
I mean, maybe, maybe what we could do is just have a motion on this one that would for now. Approve us to get registered and then maybe we go back and look at those other numbers. And, and, and do that.
Second.
Okay, so I will do that separately of, um.
And then, by then, we would know if Max got approved for his scholarship.
Yes.
Yes.
And, well, and if he gets approved for the scholarship, you know, then.
Pay for the registration.
The registration's covered with that scholarship, so this is for, um, conference registration. This motion.
Yes, so all in favor of approving the conference registration at this time and tabling the others till a later date? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, motion carries.
Okay.
Um, are there any, okay, and then we have.
And then.
Three.
And then we have, and yeah, and then, um, the other thing is read for the, read for the record books. And this is, um, what, requesting approval to purchase the books. Um, same amount as we've done the last number of years, and this is the national, international, you know, read for the record where. People around the world read the same book and, um, and we. Uh, purchase additional copies and give out to people who come and participate so the kids can, can have the books. And that's four hundred seventy-five dollars, the thing is, I mean, so I'm asking for approval to do, spend this money, but. Um, the, um.
Masons.
Masons, uh, you know, are willing to cover that cost, so then they will donate the money back to cover that, so. Um, so that is one, and then Jean is also, um, requesting three hundred dollars, um. To do what we did last December, a family ornament maker space, um, in December and then. In January, um, and she's just planning ahead and, um, because she would need to order the supplies before the January. Meeting that we would have, three hundred dollars for creativity day, and we did that last year as well, and, and that was, had good. Good part, both of those had good participation, and so she's.
Looking for a motion to approve those three requests.
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, um, committee reports.
There were no committees.
No committees, board input. Um, on behalf of Dakota Wesleyan, thank you for coming to Dakota Wesleyan and signing up those six people.
You're very welcome, that was, that was good collaboration.
I'm very excited about the collaboration, um, that you all have with the school, after-school programs at all three elementary schools. I think that's, um, very impactful and I think it's reaching a great group, so I appreciate the library's efforts and Jean's efforts to make those connections.
Tell me how that's working, how do, I mean, I, how does it work?
The after-school, you know.
After-school programs and reading.
Yeah, she goes and goes to each of the schools and, um, and she's trying to be fair. Equal treat, give equal treatment to all the, um, the programs at each of the three schools, um, and, and go and read, and she. Does two different, um, kind of readings, you know, to the, the different age groups. I'm just going back to her written report, um. You know, so the, the after-school programs that she's been reading, you know, to all grades and, um. You know, re- reaching a hundred, a hundred forty students a month, so.
Yeah, I had heard that it was happening and that I just assumed maybe that, um, oh, I, I guess I was hopeful. That they were somehow able to come actually to the library.
Well.
It'd be so great, but.
I don't know if it will happen in the cold months, but I know one month, if it was September or October. Gertie Bell students walked.
Yeah.
To the library, um, and we've also, you know, in the past have had long fellow students. Walked to the library too, yeah, it's about the same distance, yeah. Yeah, so, and in the summer, we've had, um, you know, one of the program. Do they still have a, no, they didn't have a program, so it was, it was during the school year that, yeah, it was at the end of the school year. Long fellow students, um, teachers brought their, walked their students to the library, um, you know, as, uh. You know, Jean talked about this summer reading program too, so we've had that happen a couple of times. I don't expect the students will wanna walk to the school, to the library in the winter months.
It's really nice that she's willing to go to each of those schools, I think that's fantastic.
Well, and she does that, you know, also with Palace City Preschool, you know, she goes there and, um, and. Hits both of the sections of that, um, at least monthly. First Lutheran typically comes, you know, blocks down the block to, to the library, so, anyway. So thank you for your kind words.
Any other board input? Citizens input?
Doesn't look like anyone's here.
Um, move to adjourn the meeting.
Okay, oh, can I just, before you, before you, uh, just a reminder then, our next meeting will be January twentieth. Tuesday, January twentieth at five fifteen, uh, and since December's a busy month. Getting ready for Christmas and different activities, uh, we won't do a training session in December. In here.
Thanks for coming, good to see you.
So, thank you all.